Welcome to the January 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner White and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for the meeting this evening, give us guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Myers, you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Minzer?
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner White?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, Mr. Minzer is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of January the 9th, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
May I have your job?
I move that we accept the minutes of the January 9th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda items, please step to the podium, show us your name and address and your agenda items.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Allen Griffiths. I live at 1231 Wayne Street, and I am the Chair of the Landmarks Commission. So I am here just to commend to you, I think it's regular order item number one, which is partnership between the Landmarks Commission and planning staff and Designing Local to update our local or our Landmarks Commission guidelines. I'd like to, first of all, congratulate Ms. Blair on getting funding for that project. I think to the tune of about $18,000 or so. And just from a commission perspective, being able to update these guidelines, given the context of the last four or five years where we have kind of developed and stood up an independent commission, separate from the planning process, this will help us, as we go forward, provide clarity to homeowners, to business owners, to investors, understanding what our guidelines are, how they're applied, and give us clarity and staff clarity on how to advise applicants as they come forward to the Landmark Commission. And always balancing the two issues that we face with each application, which is, on the one hand, preserving and looking after our cultural heritage in the form of our city landmarks, and also making sure that we're enabling investment and progress in our city as we both, in the community and downtown and all aspects of the city, as we move forward. So this will really help us with that, help us with clarity and with the application process. So I commend that particular issue to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffiths. Additional comments from residents regarding agenda items?
Hello. Shamika Owens, 1126 Sycamore Line, Sandusky, Ohio. God, thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for everything that you have done. Now I have heard Mr. Waddington's prayer, and I will obey, and I will do as you say. It's in the mighty name of Jesus that we love and praise you. Amen. So I won't take long, because I have food. I gotta finish with some sloppy joes going. But the meeting that took place that was brought to my attention, when Mr. Poole asked a question, and he was silenced by you, Dick, I and some more other people would like to know why his First Amendment right was squashed on the table. And I would like to know what it was that he was gonna finish saying, if that's okay. And I'll get out you guys here.
Ma'am, this portion of the meeting is reserved for comments regarding agenda items. I don't believe that what happened at a prior meeting is part of the agenda items, so you will have an opportunity to speak on any item other than agenda items at the end of this meeting. But this particular portion is reserved for items that pertain to our agenda.
Okay. Well, being so I got sloppy joes and stuff on, I just come back to the next meeting in Black History Month. And you said it's towards the end that that portion takes place?
It's usually the last portion of our agenda.
Okay. All right, cool. Well, thank you very much, and you guys have a blessed day. All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments regarding agenda items? Commissioners, we have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. We have the opportunity to introduce a new police officer this evening. Chief Almer, will you do the honors?
Well, thank you, sir. Through you, Commissioner President, the rest of the Commissioners, I'm happy to introduce our newest full-time police officer, Amanda Balogit. She's our first lateral transfer that we were able to hire at the department. She comes to us with almost nine years' previous law enforcement experience. So she's very well-trained. She was a full-time police officer for the city of Norwalk before coming here. So we're very excited to have her. Just wanted to stop down. She started earlier this month, kind of in-between meetings. So she's finishing up her field training now, and she'll be going to night shift real soon. So we're happy to have her. Amanda.
It's nice to meet everybody. I'm good, okay.
They never want to talk.
We expect a 20-minute speech, but thank you for being here.
That's all right.
We're usually unprepared as well.
We just wanted to welcome you.
All right.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
For sure.
I just have a quick question for the young lady. Are you by chance related to Ben?
I am.
Awesome. He's a great guy. That's my guy. Good. Okay, perfect. We're glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Off to a good start.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarge.
We have a public hearing this evening that's gonna be conducted by our chief planner, Erin Blair, regarding the naming of an unnamed alley.
Thank you, Commission President. We've received a petition from David Bowie, who lives at 320 East Washington Street. He submitted a petition that was signed by the majority of the property owners touching the alley behind Washington, so south of Washington Street, north of Adams, connecting Hancock Street and Franklin Street. His petition was submitted to entertain the naming of this alley to Heritage Way. His intention was to be able to direct guests to the rear parking access to his property. We did discuss this at Planning Commission and did not hear any big opposition from it, but the procedure would be to have a public hearing here at City Commission, and then at your leisure, move that forward or not to your discretion.
As this is a public hearing, we'll entertain questions from the public, if there are any, as well as questions from Commission-- questions from the public. Do not see anyone raising a question? Commissioners, questions regarding the naming of an unnamed alley?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so I saw this issue on the agenda over the weekend, and I looked at it, and I didn't know why we would be doing that. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought that, well, this really opens up a can of worms. We have, I don't know, 150, 200 alleys in various places in Sandusky. I know we have a lot. I don't know the exact number. But for this one, I think that they are all unnamed. If this one were named, it would be the first alley that we named. Maybe there's an exception to that. But, you know, the problem we run into with alleys is that, once we put a sign on it, and there's an expense to put a sign on whatever 100, 200 alleys we have, there's an expense to put a sign on it, and then you start mixing people up, and they think that the city has an obligation to maintain it. And we've had this, you know, debate over the years. Alleys are private property. They're not public property. We are not required to maintain them. And it would be as improper for us to maintain an alley as it would be to replace Mr. Waddington's front driveway. That's not public property either. Sorry to pick on you, Mr. Waddington.
I'm gonna follow up with your--
Is that requested?
All right. So I just would, I would discourage us from traveling down this slippery slope.
Mr. Chairman, if I can--
Commissioner White?
That's been years ago, maybe eight, 10 years ago. I had brought up about, like, the old fire alleys, and I'm sure the Chiefs, McKinley Street, that's 10-foot section, and at the time, they told me I had to maintain it. Well, what's-- that was for fire trucks from like 1910, 1920, correct? They were narrower, they could get down through there. That runs pretty much down the street I live on, and then off Cleveland Road, the old railroad spur. I get caught, not recently, but I got questioned a lot back in the day when that was kind of talk at the table. I don't know if you remember that, Mr. Murray, when we talked about the old fire alleys, so fire trucks could get back. Not new ones today, there's no way. But it was like a 10- and 12-foot behind the Craft Center, running towards Fifth Street.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to the question posed, I will concede the debate and the race that your memory is far greater than mine. I do not remember that particular issue coming up, but if it did come up, it was probably 15 years ago.
Yeah, I'll find it.
He has a record of it, I know that. My concern, as I think Mr. Murray's included in his comments, and that is, we have 200 alleys. I think once we start, we'll be naming alleys at every meeting. And that's my largest concern. My smaller concern is that, I think, talked about talking Heritage Way, was that? We have a Heritage Court.
Heritage Drive, I believe.
Heritage Drive. I think there's some redundancy there that could be confusing for a squad trying to find the right street or the right address, perhaps. Maybe that's a long shot, but I think it's something to consider. So I hope we will consider that.
Maybe Mario.
Commissioner White?
Mario, maybe, our chief.
That was about them--
Through you, Commission President, to the Commission, there was only one alley that I've ever really heard about that was installed for fire department access, and that was on the east side over by your property that went from First Street all the way up to Cleveland Road. Most of the alleys now, the trucks are a lot bigger, so if they were installed for fire trucks to fit down, very few of the alleys we can completely fit down the whole length of the alleys without doing any damage to the truck now anyway. So we would only use them if we absolutely had to.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
First of all, I was always under the impression that we own the alleys. I don't doubt that you're right, that if you say that the alleys are owned by the property owners. I appreciate if somebody, if you could give me the information that supports one way or another, whether or not we own the alleys or not, just where I can look at it. You don't have to explain it to me. I don't doubt that we don't own the alleys. I'd just like to look at it. So if you'd send that, I'd appreciate. The other thing is, if the alleys are owned by individual people, how do we get to name it anyway? If it's private property, I'm not sure that we get to name them. Does it-- that you can answer for me.
Through the Commission President, so the alleys are designated as kind of public access right-of-ways. What we're talking about for like the maintenance and improvement of it, they're not improved roads, so they don't have to be maintained like we do with the splatted streets the rest of the way. And I think some of the confusion is, all of the named roads are the improved roads, so there might be some confusion with, between the numbered unnamed alleys. And how the requirement for maintenance works is basically the property owner up to the halfway line of the alley, you're responsible, just like you would be for like your tree lawn, things like that. So it's not that it's not public right-of-way and access, it's that the maintenance responsibility is that of the private landowner adjacent to the alleyway.
That's driven by state law someplace?
Yes.
Okay. Get it to me later. So, okay, then we do only, we do control the alleys like the same as the Boulevard, correct? Is that what you're trying to say? In plain terms, is that it?
That's basically it, yes.
In general, okay. I don't have a problem naming alleys if you come up with a reasonable criteria. I do agree with Mr. Murray that it can be a problem, but, and I think the criteria you ask for this one is not sufficient that I'd support naming the alley, anything, just to provide directions to some one individual's personal property. How did this, did you say this went through Planning already?
It did go to Planning Commission. We were following the subdivision regulations at that time, which was not actually the procedure that should guide this process. The procedure that should guide this process is the higher vice code for that to come to you.
Trying to determine how Planning Commission arrived at the conclusion we should name this. Why is it here? Doesn't seem to make sense.
Mr. Chairman--
What was your logic? That's what I'm asking.
If my recollection is correct, this property owner came to us, and I think Ms. Blair can correct me if I'm wrong, he operates a bed and breakfast, and he indicated that it was difficult for people to find this bed and breakfast, because he would have them enter from the rear. Maybe we ought to check and see if he's a licensed bed and breakfast now that we're talking.
He's in compliance, I can confirm that.
But that was his reasoning.
Just, you decide, no, why did the Planning Commission agree? I understand his reason. I just don't, I'm not sure that's--
I think, surely I can't speak for the entire Commission, and I'm trying to remember if I did vote yes or no on that. But I think the reason most people agreed was because they felt that he was trying to operate a bed and breakfast, and maybe this would accommodate his needs. He did come with a group that wanted to do the whole block transient housing a few months before, and we denied that or table that, I think, so.
I simply wanted to weigh their logic with mine and see, maybe I was wrong. I don't see any reason to do it, for the reason that was presented. That's why I asked. Thank you.
As we do not have legislation before us tonight that would affect us, we can certainly have that further discussion. If and when we do see legislation before us to do that, this is simply a public hearing that we needed to get out of the way before we could entertain legislation. Is that correct, Ms. Blair?
That is correct. And I will make one comment, that Mr. Bowie was not able to join this meeting, and he let me know that well ahead of time, so you all know.
Not that he doesn't care, he's just gonna make--
Correct. He's out of town.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
May I just interject that perhaps there should be a different way to direct people to someone's business, other than just us naming that street. He could accompany, he could send a map accompanying his directions to the, whoever's running from.
Sure.
Does anything small, big, knit, just turn in here next to the blue car if he likes.
Lot of ways to do that. So no other further questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yeah, just a thought. I guess, yeah, as we discussed this, I probably would just think, you know, in making, and, you know, maybe this one exception, just because there is technically a business operating out of it, and maybe going forward, perhaps that's just something to think about, and maybe a distinction we can use if a situation like this were to ever come before us again. So just a thought. But I'm 50/50.
No further questions? Declare this public hearing closed. Commissioner, do we have five items on the consent agenda this evening? Any of you wish to move any of those consent items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, agreement with Cedar Point for transportation services. Item B, amending resolution number 66-22R for the WPCLF application for Mill Street High Rate Project. Item C, approval for FIRE to purchase 10 sets of turnout gear. Item D, approval for FIRE to apply for OW, OBWC FEEEG program grant. Item E, approval for FIRE to apply for OW, OBWC safety intervention grant.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, any of you wish to pursue?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
I make a motion to accept the current agenda items A through E, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions is drafted and presented to the City Commission. Under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner White?
I just wondered if the amount in item A, the $200,000, is that the same as last year, or is this an increase, or?
Mr. Chairman, to the Commission member, this is an increase over last year.
Do you know the amount? Mr. Stacy?
Commissioners, thank you for the question. It is an increase of last year of $75,000. $125,000 '22, $200,000 '23.
Oh, thank you. Nice increase.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
I apologize. Considered, yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Return to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Designing Local LTD of Columbus, Ohio, for the Sandusky Preservation Design Guidelines Update Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I move for the approval of this ordinance pursuant to section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
I just, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I'd just like to commend the Chair on his comments earlier for the right attitude that the Commission members have, and I've seen it in operation. It's about both things at the same time. Some people think that the Landmark Commission, they get concerned about it, and they think it's gonna be an impediment to the beautification and the increase in the value of their property. It's exactly the opposite. They help to maintain the historical character, and they make reasonable accommodations. And so I just want to say here, here. That's the great, that's the right way to do it.
I agree, Mr. Murray, and I know from time to time that these guidelines need to be updated, the changing world, changing environment out there. And I'm counting on the guidelines providing a little more clear path for our Landmark Commission to move forward with this. Nothing more frustrating than for our members of different committees and advisory boards to be placed on those boards and not have a clear direction as to how they can proceed to serve our community. So I think this will be a big help to-- Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Mossor Construction Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, for emergency repairs resulting from the train derailment at Columbus Avenue underpass in Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to pursue?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner White?
I spoke to Michelle a little bit before the meeting tonight. The part where it says it's yet unclear if the city will have to pay Mozier, or if Norfolk and Southern will be willing to pay them directly, and then it said staff's tracking the time, material associated with the work. I understand all that. What if there's a delay? Do we get stuck with this? Because I don't think the railroad's a real good partner, you know, from past stuff that we've had happen in this town, anyway.
I am not going to answer for Mr. Klein. I will allow Mr. Klein to answer, but my two cents prior to that is that I agree with you in the railroad not being a great partner at this point, but I think that we are going to have to take on that risk, because they are not willing to guarantee that payment. I think I'll let Mr. Klein expound on that.
Yeah, through the Commission President, I'll stay silent on whether I feel they're a good partner or not at this point. But I've not been able to get anything in writing that will guarantee that they will reimburse us 100% for everything that we feel needs to be done. As an example, the railing, I'll use the handrail as an example. There were some issues with the handrail that, when the derailment occurred, the train cars actually hit the handrail and destroyed it. Well, when the cleanup crews came in, they pushed with a dozer and pulled with chain those cars that were now lying on the road. Well, those bounced off the handrail. So the thought is, is that if, instead of replacing a section here and a section there with something that doesn't match, that they should be replacing it in kind and in full. And we're trying to work with them to say, you know, maybe we don't need an exact specialty item with the S engraved into it, or, you know, with the Sandusky S in there. Maybe we can get something better that can be better maintained. Well, they also damaged some of the curbing that the post for that handrail drives into, so some of that curbing will need replaced as well. And, you know, we've been working for eight, nine years, or probably longer, trying to get them to actually improve the aesthetics of that property anyway. And now we're trying to work with them to do what's right out there and replace the things that they damaged as part of this. We haven't been able to get a full guarantee on that, even when I've asked them, hey, we have a little bit of money set aside that maybe we can, we can replace some sections of that handrail, the sections that you don't feel you need to replace. And, you know, I've not gotten any response on that. So I think we're to a point where we just need to move forward with expediting this as quickly as possible so we can get that road open. This has been going on since October. So going through everything that we feel 100% they're responsible for, not those individual sections of fence that will have to be welded to, but everything else. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to get Mozier on staff or under contract. And originally, the railroad said that they would pay Mozier directly. The last conversation I had with the railroad, they said that they would pay the city for the things that they agreed were their responsibility, but we needed to pay Mozier upfront. And Mozier would like that assurance that they are going to get reimbursed. So the way that this project is intended to work right now at this point is to have Mozier do a full design. Mozier's already doing the lift station that's out there. That was a lift station that's under contract for the improvements, for electrical improvements at that location. So we hired them, so we had a clear delineation of what was already being done and what else needs to be done. Their design consultant is also involved, and we're gonna have them prepare that set of plans. I'm going to take that, those plans and send them to the railroad for approval. I'm not holding out hope that I get full approval, but I'm gonna try my hardest to get full approval and then move forward. Obviously, there's gonna need to be a timeframe that we're gonna have to make a decision on whether we're going to hold out for the railroad to give full approval on everything, or pieces and parts and those types of things. But I will come back to this, Commission, when we get those costs, so I know exactly what we could be in for. The railroad has said that they will pay us for the things they're responsible for, but I've also received pushback on what they think that they're actually responsible for out there. So the contract that we're looking at tonight is just a contract to get Mozier to move forward with that design, to do asphalt, curb and gutter. Some of the roads that we recently resurfaced, as recent as in 2022, have been damaged from their cleanup activities, our sewers, our pumps, things like that. The pumps in that lift station filled with wax, and the wax hardened, and they used steam to thaw the wax out and get it out. Well, that steam damaged a lot of the electrical components, and then the pumps need to be replaced as well. So there's quite a bit of work. There's lead time on a lot of that stuff, and we want to get moving as quickly as possible so that we can get pumps and equipment ordered in as timely a manner as we can. That being said, I want to assure everybody that we're working on a one-way road opening as quickly as we possibly can. I got the Maintenance of Traffic Plan updated today from the railroad. We do have a temporary lift station that they have supplied that will operate to make sure that if there is a rain event, or a snow melt, or anything like that, that that temporary pump station will turn on. We're sending that to our wastewater treatment plant rather than to the stream, because we're not convinced that they got 100% of the material out of the pipes. And once I can finalize that, we will have that one-way northbound lane open. And the reason we need to do one-way-- And the reason we need to do one way is so that there's still quite a bit of construction activity that needs to be done on the railroad bridge itself, plus that lift station that we have. Some of those walls are not very safe at this point, so we want to make sure that we're keeping the traffic safe. We're going to slow traffic down to 10 miles per hour. We'll have detour signs set up to use Hayes Avenue as well for people from out of town, but it will be open for locals that are familiar with that route.
Mr. Chairman.
What's the follow-up question?
So if their number comes back and they're going to fix A through K, and then they get the rest of it done to Z, well, do we have insurance if this turns in? It could be a couple million dollars. By the time they say that wasn't our problem, that wall looks like that, the steps were bad prior, that's on your dime to fix it back? Because it'll probably have to be recertified, I want it that it's safe, too.
Yes, through the commission president, I may need to refer to Ms. Reader on the exact insurance, but I do know in my discussions with our insurance company, they only insure the lift station. They don't insure the roadway, the sidewalks, the railing and those types of things, the curbs, the gutters. So they will insure the lift station, so we should have that out there. But we also, the plans that we develop, we'll have to also have the same discussion with our insurance company as well as with, the railroad's self-insured, so we'll have to have the discussion with them as well before we move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Klein, do you have even the roughest ballpark estimate of the cost? And is this something that's likely to be completed in 2023, or is it likely to extend beyond that? And then, Mr. Heil, a question I have for you, and you may not be able to answer it here because it's really a request for legal advice, but I would just like to understand what our standing is in terms of the railroad's liability, is it just traditional kind of tort, my car smashed into your car, my car smashed into your house, happens to be a railroad car, but they have the same liability for the damage they do? I just, you know, I don't expect you to answer it here, but if you can, fine, but if not, I'd take the answer offline. Thank you.
Do you want to handle the first one or the second question?
Yeah, I can, I can go first. I think I'll provide a more substantive answer, but yes, generally speaking, there is, there are some hiccups with railroads in the sense that railroads are governed by federal law, and that tends to preempt your normal, like, state law tort claims against them. But we can look into that and give you a more thorough answer of exactly what type of potential liability there would be out there.
Thank you.
As far, yes, as far as the timing of this, my hope is to have it open before spring in two-way. I'm hoping to get the one-way traffic open within the next couple of weeks. I still haven't received a commitment from the railroad as to when they will have all of the traffic control devices procured and installed. But I think the equipment that will take the longest to get will be the lift station equipment, and as long as we can keep the temporary lift station out there, the temporary pumps out there, and know when we have a good timeline, some of that equipment's four to six weeks, some of it's eight weeks. So if we can expedite this design, we should be able to get it open by spring, is my hope.
Mr. Chairman.
Cost, cost.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, the cost. I do not have a real good estimate on that.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the things that the railroad is, has hesitance about, about paying for, is there any question that they're going to pay for the design that Mozier does? Is that one of the points?
Through the commission president, they have told me that they will reimburse us not only for the design that Mozier does, but also for the time that our staff has put into it as well. So we're keeping track of all our hours, hoping that we can get all of it.
Okay, one more thing. You mentioned, you mentioned curbs that support the railing. Is that something they didn't want to pay for? You mentioned it, so I wonder what was the significance?
We haven't had the discussion about them paying for that exact item, but all of the conversation about that is they would prefer to bolt right to the surface concrete rather than drilling and epoxying the posts into the sidewalk. That creates maintenance issues for snow removal because our plows can hit the plate that would be sitting there, so we're telling them we don't want that, but they haven't, they keep pushing back every time we tell them to do that.
Is it currently driven, are they currently anchored properly? Okay, just in general about paying for these things, the railroad in general, I think, is responsible to make us whole, and so we should be having a battle over things that they're not going to do that bring us back to the beginning, what we were before they started. The cosmetic things, the extra railing, I just assume, I'm not sure they're responsible. From my position, that they're responsible for it, and the amount of time we delay this arguing about cosmetic things that they ultimately probably are not going to pay for doesn't make a lot of sense. So just my two cents about having this conversation, just don't drag this out over things that they're only, I think they're responsible, I don't know about anyone else, they're responsible to make us whole, take us back to where we were, not paint the place up and make it pretty and add flowers and things.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Poole's question, I was going to ask that, if they were going to pick up the design costs, so you answer that. My other question is, I noticed in your correspondence, you said that they've been working since October out there. Do we, are we going to go back and correct any inferior work that they did? Is that any of these improvements or the construction work that we're looking to do?
Through the commission president, the work that they've done is on their own infrastructure, so on the retaining walls and on the bridge deck itself. They did diamond grind, and they did do some work on the sewers. We're still pushing them to actually pressure test the force main and do those types of things. They're saying that their engineer doesn't require that, but we're telling them that it is required. So there are, the physical infrastructure that they've installed has not been done improperly, but there are still some things that I would call punchless type items that we're still pushing them to correct. And now, when there are things that the city will be responsible for, like the crash barriers and the signals and the electrical and those things, we are requiring them to give us some middles, and we are inspecting that work as well, and the building department will inspect the electrical work, too.
And one last question, this is probably a long shot, but I wonder if, I think that road is on the functional classification list, isn't it? I think it can be open to ODOT funding. I'm wondering if there's any way that ODOT would come in with some safety money just to, because, to repair that road, and that might help us out a little bit, I don't know, on an emergency basis.
Through the commission president, I have not asked them that question. I have talked to ODOT a couple of times, and they've been amazing to work with. So I'll ask, I'll make sure I reach out to Matt and see what he says.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Fires, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Fires, would you present item number three, please?
Item three, it is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed ultraviolet disinfection refurbishment project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Which one?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I believe this is somewhat of a redo of this. Should have included this in the prior document?
No, this is not a redo of the Mills High Rate Treatment. That was item B on the agenda for the loan. What this is, is back in '21, we, we got a letter from the manufacturer that said that they were going to stop making most of the parts for the existing equipment that we had at the wastewater treatment plant. At that time, we purchased several replacement parts for our shelf so we could try to time this project with the high rate treatment project in hopes that we might be able to save some money, knowing that we were going to have a UV disinfection associated with that project as well. We also worked hard to try to send the high rate treatment flow to this system and save costs by only having one, but that was infeasible, and it would have been several million dollars more to redo the piping and channels. So this project, what we did, though, is knowing that it was coming out and we were going to get a loan for it, we, it is a separate project in full, but we're including it with the loan because we're going to get such a good interest rate, well, for today's day and age, a good interest rate on the WPCLF rather than we would for a normal OWDA loan.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman. Just, this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we talked about this ultraviolet lighting system, some of it's obsolete, and we're moving to a system that isn't obsolete?
Through the commission president, I would say it's similar to my Verizon flip phone that I used to have when they told me they were no longer going to support it, and I couldn't get a plan for it anymore. I had to change, so it's really an upgrade. We have to buy a new ultraviolet system, either through them or through another manufacturer, but it's still something that we need. We still have to do the ultraviolet. They just stopped supporting the old version that we had. So we actually looked at other manufacturers other than Trojan, and Trojan was still the most cost-effective and the best for treatment.
I guess, I was thinking, are they moving away from ultraviolet systems? And according to what you said, they aren't, so, okay.
I noticed, Mr. Klein, that the percentage of the county's share of this is considerably higher than the high rate treatment. I think, believe that was slightly less than 14%, but apparently this is per our contract, our sewer contract with them. Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Fires, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Fires, would you present item number four?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a sponsorship agreement with the Library Association of Sandusky, Ohio for programming events at the Jackson Street Pier in 2023 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Fires, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. A donation of $2,000 for the K-9 program for the police department from the veterans of American Legion Post 83, if I can get a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Objection, that motion will be approved, or you're no objection, that motion is approved, thanks to the VA.
The second one's an in-kind donation for construction equipment and supply for lending us their lift for use in installing the Christmas lights. The value of the rental would have been $1,050, and they gave it to us free of charge.
I move to accept that generous contribution.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Objection, that motion will be approved, or you're no objection, that motion is approved, thanks to construction equipment.
For code, the annual notification has been published in the Sandusky Register to comply with Section 531.08 of the codified ordinances of Sandusky. The ordinance requires an owner or occupant having the care or any lot or land within the city to cut down and remove all noxious weeds and grass of a height of eight inches or more. Properties found to be in violation will be served with a written notice posted on the property. Fair to comply with this notice within five days from the date of the notice will result in the city causing such weeds and grass to be cut and removed. Such cutting and removing shall be at the owner's expense. Voluntarily cooperating by all property owners is appreciated. And then the other annual notification that's required by Section 955.1 of the codified ordinance, containers which, within which solid waste, garbage, refuse, and/or other discarded materials or recyclables have been deposited, may be placed upon a curb or curbside collection no earlier than 6:00 p.m. from April 1st through September 30th, and no earlier than 4:00 p.m. from October 1st through March 31st on the evening prior to the scheduled collection, and any such materials or containers which remain after said collection shall be removed from said curb no later than 8:00 p.m. on the date of said collection. Both of those have been published. For finance, a general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings, if your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact our office to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs for the property owner. Customer accounting can be reached at 419-627-5893. For public works, the installation of ramps, markings, and pedestrian activated signs is planned for the south side of the Campbell and Buchanan intersection in early spring 2023. This crossing aligns with the new school location and will provide a safer, more formal route for the students east of Campbell Street, walking and biking to school. Planning Department, the Public Arts and Culture Commission has adopted their 2023 public art work pro, work plan. The work plan outlines seven projects for celebrating the community and increasing the vibrancy of the city with public art. Work plan and corresponding project documents are available on the public art page of the city website. We invite and encourage all who have a passion for public art to get involved. For transit, a request for proposal has been issued to identify a third-party operator to provide contracted services for the operation of the Sandusky Transit System. Responses are due February 15th. The new contract will begin April 1st. And the Sandusky Transit System has announced the consolidation of the orange and yellow fixed route lines effective February 1st, 2023. Staff is working to coordinate with First Transit and provide notice to riders in anticipation of the service changes. And also a brief update for commission and audience that has been concerned, especially Ms. Johnson, about transit. We do have those meetings scheduled with Huron Township and Perkins Township over the course of the next two weeks, so Mr. Stacy back there has done a good job coordinating that, and we plan on reporting back once we have those conversations, but we appreciate him making efforts to make the transit more funder-friendly. And then for rec, Sandusky Recreation in collaboration with Open Way Yoga intends to apply for grant funding for up to $12,000 with Erie County Community Foundation to offer a 200-hour yoga instructor course. The course would provide instruction for a diverse staff of yoga mindfulness teachers who can offer targeted programming to a diverse group of area residents. No city funds will be used for the instructor. I'd ask for a motion to allow Sandusky Rec to apply for the Erie County Foundation grant.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Fires, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That concludes my remarks for the evening.
Comments or questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Orzak on the, and you may not be able to answer this off the top of your head, but on those trash dumpsters and the timeframe. Do you know if we've ever enforced that? And if so, who would enforce it?
So our code, code enforcement, the city's broken up into five zones, so Zone One, say, is Monday, I'm not sure exactly, but, so if Zone One is Monday, on Tuesday, they would go through Zone One and make sure there's any trash containers or, you know, it used to be a problem where they're putting couches and chairs and all kinds of stuff in the boulevard. This ordinance has allowed us to remove that, those things in a more timely manner so it's, doesn't look negatively in the neighborhood.
Would they just remove it or would they write them orders to? I, I just wonder how that whole process works, and maybe I can talk to you.
Yeah, so they, they tag the property and then they remove it in 24 hours.
All right. And then we send them a bill?
That's correct.
Additional comments or questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
Just one question regarding, it just occurred to me, regarding grass cutting. If you, I, I presume, how do they notify people that they're, that they have five days? And the reason I ask, and you may not know the exact answer, is it occurs to me, you can put something in the mailbox or on the door of a house, but if it's a vacant lot, what happens to ensure they get a full five days? I'm not envisioning you having to do anything except mail it to them.
So we posted on the property, there's a notice put on a post and there's a notification on that, and they, if, if it's a vacant lot, that's how they end up posting that property?
Okay, just a comment. Perhaps that, I don't know, a lot of people look at vacant lots routinely, so the, the five-day grace period is pretty much not going to be five days very likely. Folks didn't, if it rained or whatever and they, they just don't, I, I, just let's look at that.
Okay.
Just give some thought about, come up with a different way to notify people so they actually get the time.
Additional comments or questions for the city manager? Not removed items of old business, any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
Just like you mentioned, I did the, it was going to be a 15-minute walk through the State Theater. I ended up there about an hour, maybe a fuzz over, but is that an eye-opener? And Chris told me, apart from, if any other Commissioners or any of the workers here want to go through, he'd take you through.
A bit true.
Yep, yep, lot going on there.
Additional items of old business, Commissioner? Items of new business, any items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
I need to take a moment to discuss something. I've been, I've received a lot of phone calls regarding the notice that was sent out regarding the amendment, asking me about what I thought and why I did not sign this. And the, I think I should just clear the air so folks actually understand. There are only two reasons that I didn't sign. The first one is that I didn't particularly think, I thought it was somewhat, the folks found it confusing, which is what the phone calls gave me the impression they did. In this document on the first page, which essentially is, seems to me to be mostly a campaign material, telling you which way they'd like you to vote, it states, if this amendment passes, residents could be required to vote on every use of every park facility each year. When I go to page three where it says a charter change, it says, "The city manager and city commission shall not approve the sale, lease or private development on existing or future park property without approval by majority of the electors." It doesn't say much about use. My interpretation and everyone's is, is equal. These, we're equal commissioners, can have an interpretation. I think what this amendment says is that if a park is a park and you want to change it into something else, by sale or lease, you have to ask our permission and tell us about it. I don't believe that there's anything in this legislation that says anything about use of the park. I recognize that the statement's not untrue because the city commission has the power to put anything on the ballot that they want at any time. So it could happen, just as that light could fall from the ceiling at some time. Could is a good, is a word that does that. That's why I think this is confusing the people. They're led to believe that if they vote for this, that there'll be a problem that they don't want, that I don't think truly exists by the wording in the, in the amendment. So that's it. The second, I said there were two, the second is I wasn't comfortable using tax dollars to promote a political position, whether it's mine or not. I think that the charter tells us that we have to tell the, put the commission, tell the citizens what's in the charter change, and signing a document where I'm telling you how I want you to vote and what my position is in paying for it with tax dollars, I thought was, I was just uncomfortable and it may be perfectly legal. That's it. Thank you.
Additional items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I'll just indicate that I signed on to the letter because I do believe that we have many, many leases of various parks, whether it's for Great Lakes Grinders or Dockside or for the use of all fields. We have leased, these are leases, these are documents that are enforceable and govern, govern the use of the property. So I thought it was fair advice, and we were going to send out the, the publication anyway, so there's no additional expense to including what at least six of us thought was a proper evaluation of that. And, you know, I'll go a little bit further. I, I have had the privilege to serve the public for a very long period of time now. The public is entitled to my advice, they don't have to take it, but I should give them my best advice in terms of what I think the right answer is. And I think simply throwing that out and saying, here, figure out whether you think this is a good thing or not, I thought I was, I thought I had an obligation to provide my best advice, so that's why I signed on.
Additional items of new business, Commissioner? I would like to request a motion to appoint Naomi Twine to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
So moved.
Seconds.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Murray, do you poll the commission on that appointment?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is passed and Ms. Twine is appointed. Any additional items of new business, Commissioner? Not removed to the public comments on any item that pertains to any type of city business.
Evening Commissioners, I'm Nick at First Energy. I'd like to, I'm your contact at First Energy, I think I've met most of you over the last few years. I've been in your contact for about five years now, I've been with First Energy for about 13 years now, so I'd like to stop by periodically just to make sure that there's nothing that you all need on my end. I know I work with Mr. Klein's office on a pretty regular basis, but wanted to make sure to reach out to all of you to ensure that there's nothing that you need at my end. We've had a pretty busy last month with that big storm to roll through prior to Christmas with the 70 mile per hour winds and the negative 30-degree temperatures and some periodic storms since then, so just wanted to make sure that you all knew that you can reach out to me anytime if there's something that you need, you know, First Energy related, so I'm kind of here to assist any of you, so feel free to let me know if you need anything, so.
I've been, I can tell you, sure, I've been impressed with how you've been able to communicate with, with your customers on both outages and your restore times and honestly, pretty much on the button with getting them back in service, so thank you for, thank you for that additional communication. I don't think there's anything more concerning when you're without power, it's blowing 60 miles an hour and 15 degrees out, you kind of want to know, am I going to get back in power in an hour or 24 hours? And you've been able to provide that.
Yeah, we, we put a lot of resources into our website, so we advise customers to, to go to the website, they can kind of track the address, where are they going? We've, we update Facebook, Twitter, we, we have a media relations person that, you know, is constantly communicating with the various media channels, so we try our best to, to continuously broadcast, especially during those events, you know, especially during the holidays, near Christmas, you know, customers obviously want to know for safety purposes, since it was so cold and, you know, with it being Christmas time as well, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. Like I said, if you need me, don't hesitate to reach out, yeah, thank you so much.
Additional comments from the public regarding any item pertaining to city business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.